It's 6:30 and I'm the chair. Tonight Julie is not here. She might be coming later. So I'm calling the meeting to order of the Medway School Board.
At 6:31, Corey?
Yeah. We have public comments.
Celeste, do you see anybody wanting public comment on YouTube? She might not be there.
Okay.
Give me one second.
Okay.
No, there's nobody.
Okay. Do we have somebody to review operating norms?
I'd be happy to.
Thanks.
As a board, we will focus on student outcomes, be open minded. We will respect each other. We will value different viewpoints. We will be responsive and responsible to our community. We will make decisions based on data and facts. We will listen to each other. We will be reflective and we will run meetings that respect time, have concise agendas, are transparent and follow Robert's rules.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On our consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Again, Michael? Was that Michael?
Second? Yeah.
So do we have any discussion? Be done. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Onto the report of the superintendent.
Okay, so last month we approved the Title IX policy, prevention of sexual harassment as prohibited by Title IX. So tonight is the adoption, which is the second reading and the adoption of it. So I'm recommending that you adopt it. Celeste did go through and worked with the SBA and updated parts of the typos that were found in this version, so.
Okay.
So I'll make.
Is that Diane?
Yep, I made a motion.
Okay, sorry, you cut out for me for a second.
Sorry.
It's okay. Second?
I'll second.
Thanks Scott. Do we have any further discussion on this? Are you all in favor of adopting this policy? Say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Looks unanimous. So that passes.
Okay. And then the next item is a review of our draft budget for FY22. And I will turn this over to Sue to present it to you and give you an opportunity to ask questions and talk through it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we sent out a handout a little earlier today just to give you a brief summary of what's included in the budget draft. And in there, we're starting out by talking about our draft, our budget going down. So right now, the voted budget is going down 1.9%. Obviously, there's still lots of things that are moving and shifting. And I'm sure we'll be bringing you back something that's a little different, but I can't say whether we'll be going up or down at this point. Right now, we've reviewed staffing and that's obviously the biggest chunk of your budget outside of secondary tuition. We do have one teacher that's retiring, so we're going to allow that position to remain unfilled and we'll just absorb that through attrition. And then we have currently projected a reduction of three para educator positions due to changes in student service needs. All right, so those are the big things that are happening in the budget.
I will pass one.
I also gave you a brief summary of the BRSU assessments just to sort of give you an idea of what's impacting your budget most right now through BRSU assessments. Keep in mind that we haven't done the special ed budget, so your sped assessments are unchanged right now. But as far as on the general side of things, we haven't, we don't have an approved budget at the BRSU level yet, but we have presented the first draft and the board has taken a look at it. The biggest change that's impacting you is the increase to the curriculum and student staff support assessment. And that is now includes the hazing harassment bullying, restorative justice coordinator position. It's quite a mouthful. That is a new position that's at Conic and Green this year. And we have decided that that position belongs in the BRSU budget because it really should be serving all schools, not just the TNG schools. So that position is shifted from one budget to the BRSU budget and then is assessed out to everybody. And so, of course, you are now paying your share of that position through the assessment. We also have some increased costs for curriculum in the instructional software section due to needs in order to support kids. And we also have some increased cost with some, it's not instructional, Seesaw would, how would you describe Seesaw Randy? What would be the right description for that software?
It's a learning management system.
Okay.
And we have some additional costs for that for next year.
Yep. So all that's sort of wrapped into that curriculum, student staff support assessment. We also have some increased costs in positions on the administrative side and that's due to an increase from a point six for the assistant superintendent from the budget this year, even though right now we don't have an assistant superintendent in the position and we're increasing that at the BRSU level to a 1.0. So that will increase administrative assessment. On the other side, though, we also are increasing the surplus that we're giving back to the districts. So that sort of offsets that administrative increase in your budget itself. So with the secondary program, there's not a lot going on in secondary right now. We've got stability right now in kids from what we can see. So the increased costs that are included in your budget are due to tuition estimate increases. We don't have real numbers on that yet. I imagine we'll hear from BBA any day now on what their tuition will be. And we won't hear back in time for budget what the state numbers will be, but we'll have some public school tuition. I'm sure that we'll be able to include an update in the budget. All right. The other piece of that that we'll get from Brooke shortly, I'll be shooting an email off to her. I'm sure she's already collecting the data for me on where kids might attend next year for seventh grade. So where the sixth graders are going to go. So right now, I just sort of had that ballparked and will again fine tune that for the next draft. So before we move into a conversation about tax rate, I wanted to know if anybody has any questions about the detail that's in the budget or did anything come up in your review that you'd like a little more information on?
I just want to interject. I just got a phone call that Maria, my wife, received from Arlene Bentley, who I spoke to earlier today. She's trying desperately to get connected to our meeting. She has the new Hub 66 fiber optic, but she can't seem to get through. So I thought perhaps if Celeste or somebody is there, Maria tried to help her, but in any case, she wants it noted that she's been making an attempt to arrive at our meeting. So forgive me for that interruption. And I need to regather my thoughts concerning.
Sure. Anybody have any questions on the detail? Okay, I'm not hearing any.
I guess one question, one question I had, which pertains to the meeting that I attended last week with the Toconic and Green, is that I realized that I'm not really clear. There are some new costs that have come to the Medway School within the last nine to 10 months or so, I guess, as I, as I understand it, regarding, you know, how things are restructured or services that we're now paying for. I just caught this peripherally because I got to that meeting late from last week. I thought, I was hoping maybe you could clarify tonight a little bit of what, what is going to be new for the upcoming tax meeting year, this year for the, for the.
So I think with what, what's new with respect to the costs that Medway might share from the BRSU assessments are just those couple of things that I've already noted. So that hazing harassment bullying position is new to the BRSU budget. You're going to pay a share of that. You know, you're 13.43% or whatever it is in the assessment, whatever that turns out to be. That's that, you'll pay that share of that position. You'll pay the share for the added costs for additional software expenses and curriculum expenses that we've added in. You'll pay your share of the costs for the increase in the superintendent position, excuse me, assistant superintendent position. That's that FTE increase. And then, of course, just the general increases in the BRSU budget, similar to your budget, general increases with respect to salaries and benefits. But those are, those are really the new highlights in the BRSU budget that are then, of course, assessed out and shared among all districts.
So and I'll just add in, Michael, that the, that position, the hazing harassment bullying position is, is more than that. And it was originally, the Toconic and Green Board originally wanted to put that position into their budget. But over the course of the year, it's really expanded. So it, that, that particular person conducts investigations for bullying, hazing and harassment. That person is also now our supervisory union Title IX investigator. So that's a requirement of the Title IX policy. And, and his skill set is honed at conducting comprehensive and well-run investigations. And so you need to have somebody to do that work. He also has extensive background in school safety and crisis management. So as we've already had a situation in which, you know, we, when, when we're, we're updating Medway's school safety plan and considering what needs are, we, it's to your benefit to have access to somebody with his skill set. So we've already used that. So you've actually already been using him this year, even though you haven't had it budgeted. And so it's only, only appropriate for you to be paying for those services as Toconic and Green is.
Absolutely.
So that's, I think that's, that's the piece that I would think you probably have the most question about is, is this really necessary? Or is this something that we're using? And, and it's, it's easier to pull it.
I, I didn't have any question in those ways. I was simply looking to understand, just to be able to, if I need to articulate it to people in the community to be a little bit better informed about it myself, because I feel at times woefully under-informed about some of these things.
Yeah, no.
So I have no argument with the logic or the, or the intention behind the position or what it's supposed to do.
Right. No, I, I didn't think you did. I was also just trying to give everybody that context so that you did have a strong enough understanding of where that addition was coming from and why should you face those questions from people in your community? So.
Right. Because I think that was like a 13 and a half percent increase or something like.
Right. Right. And, and we'll also, when we start putting together information for your annual report, you know, the BRSU side of things will explain the increases in their budget. Then we'll go into further detail to sort of outline the increases to the assessments of the individual districts. So hopefully it'll be clear, you know, you'll be able to point people to where that explanation can be found as well and you'll, you'll be able to review it yourself.
Thank you. Great.
So ready to move on to tax rate, the fun conversation?
We who, yes.
Um, so you, you guys know this is still very preliminary, but we do have some updates, right? We got from the state, we have the yield and that's the biggest piece. And unfortunately, this year it is going down. It usually goes up just a little bit. This year it's going down, which of course increases your tax rate. So I want to talk first about the two things that are sort of, those things that are completely out of our control, right? That yield number that's completely out of our control. It's set by the state. That in and of itself is three cents on your tax rate right there. Okay? The other thing that's happening, regardless of whether we like it or not, is we're losing two cents of our reduction in the tax rate due to the Act 46 incentive. And we knew that was going to happen, right? Every year it goes down two cents. So our tax rate goes up two cents. So there's five cents right there that sort of is, is happening regardless of what we do, unless we were to seriously try to offset it with other factors, which we've done a little bit of, right? Where our budget is going down. And we're also proposing in this particular projection that you go ahead and use our anticipated surplus from this year and apply it to next year's Ed spending figure, which will reduce your taxes. So those two things help the tax rate go in the opposite direction. And right now, this is showing a five cent increase, 5.6 cent increase on the tax rate from last year at $1.53. Now that's your equalized tax rate. We know then that gets taken down to the town level, divided by your common level of appraisal to equalize the tax rate in the towns. And in this particular case, what you're looking at right now is this, the common level appraisal. These are last year's numbers. So we don't know what this year's numbers are yet. We'll get them in a couple of weeks. And it's showing Paul it with an increase of five cents, 5.3 cents and Rupert with 5.6 cents. So the next step really is to tweak the equalized people number. We'll finalize that. We don't have anything from the state yet on that. I'm hoping to have something from them soon. They are, their basic prediction to us is don't expect equalized peoples to do anything but go down. We know that ADM, two-year average ADM, right? And our ADM this year, our actual ADM is much lower than what we'll get for ADM this year because the legislation that was passed lets us keep our ADM at last year's numbers. So what that means is we're looking at last year's numbers twice, right? I haven't gone in and plugged all that in yet because we don't have the information from the state. So I'm not really sure what it's going to look like. But we know that our secondary numbers have not been rising drastically. They've been fairly stable over the last couple of years. And that's the number that will help drive the equalized people figure up because secondary has a factor of 13% applied to it when equalized peoples is calculated. So if, if secondary is not going up and we know overall enrollment has been going down, you know, I, I think it's, it's likely we are going to see that equalized people drop a little bit, which will also impact the tax rate negatively. But we'll wait and see. We will have a better number for you next draft. And at that point, we can have a conversation about what you might want to draw from the tax stabilization fund, if any. You know, you have a large tax stabilization fund. That's what it's there for. We have the opportunity to talk about what, what is a tax rate that you're comfortable with? In other words, we, we're going to the voters with a voted budget and we want to present a tax rate to them that you guys are comfortable seeing. Since the yield is not going to be finalized in the spring, we could look at this and say, well, we're comfortable with this increase in the tax rate. We're going to present it to the voters. And then the legislature could turn around and lower the yield even further, raising the tax rate. And at that point, we could say, okay, well, we didn't want the tax rate to go over five cents, so we're going to draw from tax stabilization to make that happen. That's not a decision that you have to make. How much money we draw from tax stabilization isn't necessarily a decision you have to make in January. But we can focus on what, what do we want to present to the voters as a tax rate? Okay, so that's a conversation we can have in a couple of weeks when we've nailed this down a little further.
Okay.
I had a question.
Yep.
You talked about enrollment going down. Is some of that because of the amount of homeschooling going on? And would it be anticipated that that would change?
Yeah. So this year, we know that our enrollment is down and that's a big factor. That plays a big part. But because of the legislation that was passed last spring, even though our enrollment has gone down and even though our actual ADM number for this year has gone down, we're, we're frozen at last year's level. So we get the benefit of that. But overall, from year to year to year, we have seen our enrollment sort of continually slightly decline, right? It hasn't, it hasn't been going up. And, and so even though this year, we're going to have that benefit of staying frozen, that's only for one year.
But can we tell it all with a number of home? Because someone moving into the community still has to report that they're homeschooling, I suppose.
Yeah, we have those numbers.
Can we, with, looking at those numbers, I find it hard to believe that it's still going down because there's been a lot of people moving into the area. Is that the case or is it, do you think once? I mean, what are the, what do those numbers look like? I mean, when you factor in the, the homeschoolers, are we still going down? Like, does it look like we're still going to be going down?
I, I haven't looked at that specifically, but I can for the next meeting. Celeste has the homeschool numbers by grade, you know, for each district. So we can compare that, add it into our current enrollment figures at Medway and take a look at what enrollment might be. I'm going to have to do that for you anyway because we'll be announcing a tuition rate and we'll, we use those enrollment figures in our tuition rates. So that's sort of part of that calculation. And we would do exactly what you're saying, Scott. We would take a look at those home study kids and say, who, who from this list is typically home study? And who is, do we think is new due to COVID? And we'll assume for argument's sake that those kids are going to come back next year when we're doing that calculation. Whether or not they do, we'll wait and see, but, but we will look at that. So yeah, I can definitely have those numbers for you next time around.
I, I can answer that right now, Scott, based on what we've got. So we, last year, Medway had 13 students who were home study and this year you have 18. So that's only five, but your total enrollment of schools, 148. So that is still indicating a decline.
Right.
So in other words, obviously, other students have left the system on top of those who have left just to begin, begin a homeschooling class, a homeschooling program.
Right. I mean, you've had kids move in, you've also had kids move out. Yeah.
Does that, is that only at Medway? Or are you talking about in our district? Like, I mean, in Paul and Rupert? Like, so kids that were going into high school that have moved into the community, is that still, is still considered our peoples?
Yeah, no, this is just Medway. That's a good question. This is just Medway School. So we don't have, I don't have on this particular spreadsheet secondary numbers, but as Sue said, I think the secondary numbers are relatively stable.
Yeah, so that you could see right on the budget. And that's on packet page 34. You can see that we expected 141 kids. We have 142 kids. And based on 12th grade and sixth grade moving up, next year we expect 141. So, you know, pretty stable.
I also want to make a comment that in, like, our preschool numbers in general are lower and even going into kindergarten. So this year was our first year with only having one kindergarten teacher. We've always had two. And it looks like next year we only will need one based on our numbers. So even kids coming into our system, there's less.
Do you have any other budget questions? Thank you, Sue. You just put it all together so well for us. I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
So a lot, a lot more information coming in January.
Right. And that'll be what, the BRSU as well, all of those kind of coming in one after the other.
Yep.
Yeah, BRSU will be the January 4th.
Right. Did you have something, Michael?
No, it just seems very, even more sort of fluid and unsettled than usual, but that's not a surprise given our.
Right.
The challenge we've all been facing here. Okay.
Okay, so the, Randy, the Australian ballot.
Yeah, so. So you can see here. So I'm making a recommendation that you make a motion to move to Australian ballot, are all articles. So you have a few that you typically do on the floor for moderator and you know what all those are that are pulling right now. And so Act 162, which I included because I wanted to make sure that you all had it and it was short enough that I felt like I could do that, was, was passed by the legislature when they were in session in the end of the summer. And it allows for boards some freedom because of COVID. Okay, so there are a number of, number of things that, that are relevant for the, for you as a board. At this point, the, the, there is a strong recommendation to not hold in-person meetings in March because you need to follow all COVID restrictions and, and that's, people are finding that that's going to be very difficult to do. So the recommendation is to make, make a motion, to pass a motion as a board, that you would vote those few things that you typically do on the floor via Australian ballot and that you hold an informational session that would be designed to allow for the questions and answers for your community related to the budget prior to town, that the town meeting day where you, you typically vote. The other piece that I think is, is relevant to you that is not part of the motion that I, that I'm recommending that you consider is that you do, you don't need to collect voter signatures in order to be on a ballot. So for those of you who are up for reelection this year, there's a process that you can go through that doesn't involve having to get the, the signatures. We're still expecting, we're, we know that the legislature is actively working on some additional legislation regarding town meetings and school district meetings. There are a number, there, there have been working, there's, there's been members of the House and Senate working together to draft some legislation on meeting with a legislator later this week to talk through more of the details that are involved in what they're proposing. But it, it seems to allow, one of the things is to allow a postponement of the vote. And I know that there are a couple of, of districts that typically vote on everything on the floor that are considering postponing. But I haven't heard of districts at this point in, who have your configuration to consider postponing the, the day that you vote. So, and it's also not, you can't do anything with it because it hasn't been passed. So it's, it's just that piece is for your information.
Okay. So when would the Australian ballot happen? Would it be that sort of last?
March 3rd.
Oh, it would all be on the same.
The voting day, yeah.
Okay.
So those questions would be added to the ballot.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
I'm, I have a question or two, if I might. Relative to an informational meeting, Randy, that you mentioned, I'm just a little confused. Are any of these things going to be held live and in person? Or would the intention be as much as possible to have it all be done through a Zoom meeting?
Yes, yep, that's what the recommendation is. Is that it's a virtual, a virtual meeting.
And wow, okay. So I'm wondering for people, well, I, I mean, I totally support that. I just wonder how, how we would kind of help to facilitate making that happen locally so everybody could have access to it, which.
Yep. So I think that that's a really good question. And so if you decide to move in this direction, then I do think it makes sense for you as a board to consider, you know, how might we make this accessible? Considering that people may or may not have access to the internet. And so, you know, you're not required to create a place, but maybe you as a board decide that you, you want to allow for some, you know, while they're not in person, there's sort of a remote place where people could, could access the internet in order to, to be a part of the virtual meeting. We could talk through that. And, and, and I'll say to you that while I put this on the agenda for now and made the mo, and made the recommendation for you to make a motion and to, to consider voting on this, you may decide you want to wait until that, that meeting at the beginning of January. There may be some more information for you. But it was important enough that I wanted to put it on your radar. I want to make sure you're aware of this legislation that's new and applicable only to the 2021, you know, election, town meeting, school district meeting time. Because I didn't, I wanted to make sure you were all aware and thinking about it. There will be a lot more information coming for all of us, a lot more guidance for town clerks and for select boards and for school district boards. But I didn't want you to be caught off guard come January. So, you know, if you feel like, you know what? You want to wait until our next meeting to vote on it? I don't think there's any harm in that at all. But I do think that if you, that that would be the latest that you would want to wait because there's so, there's such a ripple effect to getting all the information in for the booklets and for, to get out to your taxpayers and, and it takes time and it will be a little bit different this year.
Just, just a quick.
Do you think we have enough time with doing that postponing for January?
You will have enough time, but you'll have to make the, you'll have to vote next time.
So how would that look for us right now? Would we get a motion to postpone it or?
So you, you might, yeah, so that's a great question. So I would recommend that you, you see my, my motion is here. My recommendation in the language is right here. So if you, sorry, I'm like just, I pulled out my notes on this. So if somebody on the board, it probably makes sense for somebody on the board to make the motion that I recommended and then for the board to discuss it and then for you to vote on that. You're either going to pass it and say yes, or you're going to say no. You're either going to pass it and say yes, or you're going to say no, I would assume, because you want to wait. Either way, there's nothing, you know, from my end, it wouldn't be that I would in any way feel slighted because you didn't, I'm being very transparent with you about your options, and this was the best way to move forward with giving you the opportunity tonight to vote on it, if you wanted to.
I'd like to make that motion, if that's possible, and use the language that Randy has already prescribed for it.
So I'll just read that, it's pursuant to Acts 162, "We move to conduct the Meadowway School District 2021 Annual Meeting Using Australian Ballot Voting Method For All Articles."
If, if the one provision, and I kind of would maybe put this to folks for a level of comfort for our constituents, is to specify that it would apply to this particular school year so that no one would be concerned, because my immediate concern was I don't want to lose the privilege of having a live town meeting. So maybe we can add the date, and maybe that will be there anyway, but some language to make that clear.
It is in that wording, it says for this 2021 annual meeting.
I don't have any
And that is also, that's only the meeting that's allowed by the legislature right now. So, they would have, yes, so.
And Act 162 is titled "An Act Relating to Using Australian Ballot for Municipal Meetings in the Year 2021."
Right, so they also have that in there, yeah. Okay, do we have a second, so that we can discuss this?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Diane. So for discussion, we would also have to know what our remote meeting would look like? Would we need to do some work to plan that as soon as possible? Or would that be discussed at our next meeting?
So, so I've worked with another district who's done like an informational session, which is almost exactly what this is. So I would likely work with Julie to develop sort of that presentation to review with you. That's how we've done it with the other district that we've done this for.
Oh, so it would be a recorded presentation?
No, we'd probably create like a PowerPoint and walk through, and have all the key highlights and key pieces of information, and then allow for an opportunity for questions and answers at the meeting itself, so that it's interactive with the people in your community.
Does anybody else have thoughts about?
One other thing I had was in terms of allowing people who may not have access, or easy access to what kind of, I don't know, I haven't been keeping up to date with what the maximum amount of people in a room are now in Vermont. Is it 25 people? Does anybody know that?
Well, it's hard to know what it's going to be at the beginning, you know, at the end of February. So essentially, we'll have to be monitoring that, because I don't think anybody can predict kind of how the governor's orders may change over the next six, eight weeks. But I would say that it makes sense for us to keep close tabs on that, and to consider where might be, you know, places in Rupert, or a place in Rupert, a place in Polat, just depending on where those numbers end up, and how might we help to provide some access.
So my thoughts are, most students, most parents have access to the internet. So that covers a base of some people. I know there are probably some adults in the community that also have access. Michael, I hear what you're saying about concerns. I know that the Polat Library is a hotspot for Wi-Fi, so you can, you know, if somebody needed to, they could go and tap into their Wi-Fi. I'm pretty comfortable just saying, let's go ahead and do this, because it's probably what we're going to have to do, and we can still problem solve as January approaches, any changes that we need to. Those are my initial thoughts.
Yeah, it seems like if we make a decision, then we can put a better plan into action earlier that we decide.
Right.
Okay, do we have any other discussion, or are we ready to vote? Ready to vote, okay. Arlene, we have you muted, is, I don't know, if you can unmute to vote?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Hi, Arlene.
Hi. I had to go upstairs and get my other computer, the one down there doesn't work.
Okay. All right, so all in favor of moving to an Australian ballot for all articles for our Meadowway School District 2021 Annual Meeting, all in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye, aye.
That's unanimous, so it passes. Great.
Okay, so we also, you have from us is just the final part of the report of the superintendent, is you have a report from me, and you have a report from Brooke, and so we wanted to give you an opportunity, you know, certainly to ask any questions or talk about what's going on, based on what's in our report, or any other questions you have.
Well, one thing that struck me was I'm in awe of your and Brooke and your brilliance and flexibility. It's, the pressure that everybody's under is intense, and I really appreciate the work that you all are doing for our district.
Thank you, thank you.
Does anybody have questions, or?
I just wanted to say that I'm really grateful for all the community support. A lot of people are reaching out and giving donations and supporting kids in need, and our community has really rallied to support food and other things. Usually we have a giving tree, and we weren't able to do that this year, but we contribute to other places in the community where our families are benefiting, but just a lot of generosity, and we're very lucky for that. And I wanted to thank Diane Mack for putting together a community scavenger hunt for our families that are really looking forward to doing that around town. So, thank you, Diane.
No problem.
I think that, you know, it probably goes without saying, but it also is important to say that you are correct, Corey, everyone's working really hard. And it's in it, and I've said this a number of times at a number of different meetings, our teachers are working really hard. You know, it's tough to think about what public school teachers, teaching in person, are facing on a day-to-day basis. They're working very, very hard, and continuing to grow and learn and partner, and it's really impressive. And I know it's not easy, and I want to take the opportunity to thank them and to let them know that I appreciate everything that people are doing. Our principals are working incredibly hard, you know, there's every day new challenges because of teaching and trying to run a school under the conditions we are. And, you know, as you know, at Meadowway, we did have a positive case, and a positive COVID case, and Mandy and Brooke engaged, you know, immediately with me, and they really took the reins. And, you know, that our nurses, I could just probably continue to go on and on, but when you watch people engage in really stressful, difficult times, and to be professional, and also personal, I don't know, you know, I don't know how word travels within your communities, but you're a pretty small community. In the time that Brooke and Mandy took to connect individually with staff and families, shows the level of caring and connection that exists, and I do believe, from what I've heard and what I saw, that people felt cared for, and, yeah, cared for, in every sense of the world, word through that experience. And, you know, I, for one, am grateful to work for, with people who behave and care the way that they did, and it was so evident. So, and we take it all day at a time, that's all anybody can do, because any of us can get sick at any moment, and we still are showing up and educating kids.
That's great. And you had mentioned, I think this was at the BRSU meeting, that the contact tracing now is on the response of the schools, and that's a big burden that they are undergoing.
It is, and that's really, you know, that was our, we had literally just got an updated COVID contact tracing document, that Monday I received it. And so, to be honest, I had not yet by Wednesday morning really gone through and understood well what it meant, and we got a crash course in that. And, and so that was an additional, a significant shift in responsibility. When we had our first positive case, you know, the contact tracers worked, and every, the Department of Health really carried that work. And for, you know, from the time we finished meeting with them, for the next five to six hours, I was getting emails every hour to hour and a half from the contact tracing team telling me about the progress they'd made, and by nine o'clock that night, they had met, they contacted everybody. But that entire burden fell to us. And so, you know, all of a sudden, in the middle of the day, when we were connecting with the Department of Health, we got templates of letters that hadn't even been distributed yet. And we're trying to make sure that we're communicating the information, but, you know, we wanted to add, it wasn't sort of our tone, right, and our voice, and it felt, it felt, I think, a little bit cooler than we wanted, right? We wanted to connect and be personal and caring to our families, and so it meant kind of updating all of that in the moment. But it was an important lesson, process for Mandy and Brooke and for me, and to know, okay, now we have a sense moving forward. But that ended up being a tremendous amount of time for them to do that. And, you know, and you all know this, but we aren't, well, Mandy's a nurse, but we aren't, and so executing that type of work is new for us and different from what we typically would do.
Well, thanks again, Brooke and Mandy, pass our thanks to Mandy, please.
I definitely will, it's a group effort, and we are lucky to have an amazing team supporting our families and students.
I guess we are now back to the community engagement discussion?
Yeah, so this is, I know that Julie put this on, I don't know if I've heard from her. So, I mean, this is turning this over to you as a board. Julie did include in here the document that she had, you know, shared with you as a draft for what might go in the letter to the community, as well as questions. So I'm going to just, you know, bring you to packet page 44 and give you the opportunity to talk as a board about what you think about this, if you want to tweak or adjust. And I think that she's interested in having something that's in a format that we could move forward with by the end of this meeting.
Okay. So these, the questions to either yay or nay on all of this?
Yeah, I think that, you know, she wrote the paragraph at the top, and then, do you feel like these questions are really getting at the information that you are seeking from the board?
Yeah, I guess my one question about the first question, post-secondary education, is that just, that's, the intent of that is actually, it's not vocational? Or is it any, any education?
I had a similar thought that way, and I thought it should be specific and include vocational, and, you know, across the boards, kind of post-secondary educational school.
Right.
I mean, that was my personal take.
So something, okay.
Yeah, it'd be clear that
To qualify that a little more specifically, that it doesn't just mean necessarily academic college, it could also mean
Trade.
Trade.
Some people go in the military.
Oh, right.
How do you? So, yeah, we need to work on that one, I don't know what the answer is, but.
So I was just thinking, we could say something along the lines of, "Ready for post-secondary education of any kind," and then in parentheses, "college, vocational, certificate programs, military."
Better.
Okay, just to specify that, okay.
And the other, the other one thing, not to be like sort of nerdy, but I feel like it's true is, and I don't know that there's anything to do about it, but that word "ready" is a very big word in that context. I mean, those are really referring to certain skill sets, I would assume, is what that means, you know. But then, you know, this is really an academic point, I just was smiling at that when I was reading this earlier.
Right. So then the next one she had wanted the most input with was the skills. Again, I guess just more concrete examples of skills. So
Problem solving or critical thinking.
Right, right. What is? I was thinking of like practical skills, but I don't know if that makes, if that is something that doesn't understand, but.
Yeah, no, that's a valuable, you know, again, but there's got to be some other way of phrasing practical skills besides practical skills.
At our school, we talk about transferable skills, like collaboration, like communication, self-direction. I don't know, we call them transferable skills, but I'm not sure if that's exactly what you're thinking.
Yeah, I think that's a great direction, yeah, yeah, like transferable skills. And this problem solving.
Yeah, my thinking was what the classic example that Julie always brings up is, you know, balancing a checkbook or making changes of skills, but yes, the transferable skills is also the thing I was, that language I was looking for.
Would that be like life skills?
Life skills.
Life skills.
It's So this would, would these be, okay, for this question, they're not going to be ranked, but we are, people volunteer answers, but if we give these suggestions, they're going to pick from our suggestions. So it's kind of, that's a tricky situation, I think, for the word.
She has IE in front of that, but I think it could be an EG instead, you know, for example. And we might, again, put in, you know, please feel free to, you know, to indicate what you consider most important. Don't be limited by these choices.
These are all the examples, or something along those lines? These are, yeah.
I mean, I don't have the wording, but.
Okay, so I can
Question number three seems similar in that way, that it would need more, I guess, particular, specific kind of an example, with some verbiage that would with some verbiage that would allow whoever's filling the form out to, you know, contribute their own idea there.
Right, with some suggestions, but also allow for somebody else to come up with their own.
Do you think they should be separate as two separate questions?
Well. So just combine it into one?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't, I'm, I'm suggesting it that, just to talk about it, I guess, because I wonder if, if you combine them and then you're able to look at the responses, it gives you a sense of whether people feel like it, what they're most concerned about is academic success or other traits that you may ultimately value more if you have people offering transferable skills or, you know, kind of, she's referring to them as values or morals. It, it provides an interesting way when they're combined for you to literally see kind of, what do you hear more of? And how does that then inform you as a board?
So it actually prioritizes without asking, well, we'll get the sense of a priority.
I wonder, I don't know.
That makes sense.
I'm just tossing the idea out.
I, I thought the questions, when I read through them, were a little bit, it wasn't redundant, but what you've just said really to me makes real sense, and it would be a kind of a litmus about, you know, you know, yes, I, I see them both as being, I need my, my graduate to have math skills and be able to discern what, you know, is the ethically correct thing to do, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I think if you were going to combine them, it should be mentioned in the question, you know, both academic and values and morals, so that they realize that we're not only asking the question from an academic point of view, then if you were going to combine the questions. I think coming from a school board, they may just assume we're looking for, oh, do we think math is more important than English or something? So it's important to at least say, you know, when, when we're looking at skills or, you know, that it's academic, it's values, it's, you know, coming out of the system, what I think we need to give them that much so we know, that they know we're looking for a variety of answers.
Do you, are you opposed to putting them together, or do you, do you think?
I was at first. When you first posed that. Randy, when you were first saying it, I was kind of like, well, I think I like them separate, but, but I do think that you made a valid point of, you know, I would kind of like to see, you know, which do they put first? You know, what, what, you know, is, is the work ethic and perseverance more important? Or is it, you know, reading, writing, and arithmetic? You know, I'm kind of curious on, on kind of what response we get with that. But, but I do think it's important, we let them know that we're looking at, you know, that whole picture, not just the academic pieces.
When you're looking, when you're looking basically at these skills and what you want, you're looking basically at having skills that you are able to communicate with somebody else in a clear, concise manner. Because our skill set that we need by the time, for example, kindergarteners and first graders get out of 12th grade is going to be exceptionally different than the skill set we need today. And the virus is in fact driving us in that particular direction. So you're looking for skills that you can communicate.
So you're, you're, are you saying communication skills?
Communication, clear, concise communication skills. Listen to the TV every day, or the, look at the writing that you see. And it's like, oh, my gosh, really?
But I think that's interesting, Arlene. I, I, I agree with you, but on the other hand, you know, what about someone that's going to go into the trades and to be a master electrician or something?
You have to be able to communicate.
You do, but it's less, probably less important than other positions. I mean, you need to be mechanically inclined and have the ability to absorb information and know how to do that, but you don't necessarily need those skills as much as you do maybe in other positions. Or, I mean, just pulling that as an example, I am not disagreeing with you, but I'm just kind of thinking from all sides that.
Have you ever tried to communicate with somebody that you want to build something for you? A house, for example?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah. And have they been able to communicate back? I'm not saying that communication is the most important thing. I'm saying that it is an overarching necessity.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
I think we, we, we want to remember in the context of this, of this letter, and again, I didn't really follow up, but I began to dabble into, there are numerous websites around that are, and even companies designed to artfully query the community about a variety of whatever issues might be facing a given school district or a given board, et cetera. But I think we need to remember that we want to put this out so that we can, what's our purpose in, in this, in this letter? I mean, my, my sense is that we want to get a, a better sense of what our constituents, our constituents feel is important, so that we can advocate in that direction. And, you know, in reading through this thing, part of, I don't know, I, I was thinking about, how do you ask a question about sort of, well, I'll, I'll be blunt, sort of, I was thinking about like budgetary things, like how do you ask people? You know, how much money are you, how do we, how do we broach these topics of, of school field trips? And, and where, where do you draw the line and what's too expensive? Et cetera, I don't know, it just became a very complicated thing. So not to go off down into the weeds, which I've probably already done, but part of my thought about this was, what do we want this to do for us? Us as a board and us even in terms of bringing our community together, which seems like an important thing to do.
Randy did ask that question last time, what we want to know what the purpose is, is it for the end goals, is, is it, you know, or why are we doing this is, would definitely inform. I think it stated at the beginning also in the, in the front of the letter, why we are interested in your feedback, in order to or, you know, whatever. But so that people, when they fill it out or answer, they can understand what they would expect from us as a response, or why they even want to fill it out, I guess.
Well, and it might be really good to have a little one sentence that says, you know, if you have any other comments that you would like us to know about, please feel free to write them below. I mean, it's a bit of a risk on one hand, but, you know, only we would know. But that might give people a, a little bit of a broader spectrum to say, yeah, I really think it's important for you to teach, you know, everyone their X, Y, and Z. Or whatever they may have to say.
I think, Arlene, I think your input kind of rang a bell with me, that that's, that would be exactly the type of response that I'd like to be getting out of this questionnaire, is, you know, where we're not saying, you know, making too many suggestions, like, is it math? Is it English? Is it, you know, where, you know, someone from the community says, yeah, I think the most important thing they should be graduating with is a really great grasp of how to communicate. I mean, that's, that's a valuable, that's a really valuable kind of response and something for us to be like, okay, you know, that's a really good thing to, you know, if we had a lot of people kind of coming in with that similar notion, that gives us some good information. We may have, you know, a large sector saying computer skills, you know. It would be interesting to see, you know, where our constituents, you know, where a lot of their feelings lie on this, so. It's, it's tricky, because I think we should be fairly concise and specific with the questions, but we don't want to box people in either. I kind of want to get, you know, I don't know.
I think that, you know, from, from, for me, I, I am still, you know, I think it, the question for me is, are you doing this, going through this work in order to identify priorities of your community to share with me with an expectation that 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 is incorporated into some of what's happening at the Meadowwee School, right? Or not just our school, right, because you service students through 12th grade? Is it, so is the, is the purpose to, to yield a response from the educational system? Which I would argue is probably your responsibility as a board, if that's what you're collecting information for. And so, you know, you, we don't, we don't, we don't have a structure in which, you know, you're, you as a board are directing the curriculum or directing nuanced programming. So, so what you're looking for are larger scale concepts that, that are presented, I think, to your point, Scott, in a way that is resonating throughout the community, right? You've got a lot of feedback indicating, and it may be as broad as, wow, we have an, when we look at responses, we've got kind of equitable distribution between people wanting a balance between academics and transferable skills. So they see both of those as important. Right? That would be information, or we didn't really hear a lot about this, but we did hear a lot about this. And then to engage in discussion with you about what, what does that mean moving forward? So I think I keep, for me, it comes back to that idea, the purpose of the work, which I, I know I continually bring up, but, and it may be that you just get this information and then the purpose is identified on the other side of it.
From the information, we draw the conclusion.
Yeah, it may be that that's where the answer comes, is on the other side of the work. But sometimes if you don't have clarity on that, then you collect the information and then you as a board have, you know, 500 data points, and you're not really quite sure what you're supposed to do with this and how you're supposed to kind of aggregate all this data and make sense of it, because that, right, that is what the other side of this survey is for you. It's, it's who as a board now figuring out what you're going to do with this. And I don't know if you're going to want another committee to take the time to go through all the responses and you'll have to think through all of that.
Yeah, that is my concern too, that if it's, if it's kind of aimless, then we, then it just gives us, it doesn't help as much, when it's more defined with that in mind, then we can put it to use, I guess. What were you going to say, Scott?
Well, Randy, I think, yeah, I love that question that you're posing, that what are we doing this for and what are we going to use it for? I just, I look at our operating norms and it's just amazing how many of them apply. It's talking about, you know, focusing on student outcomes and then valuing different viewpoints, be responsive and responsible to our community and make decisions based on data and facts. I mean, how many of those, it hits all of those. So if we're gathering the data of our community of how they feel in order to kind of, you know, have an impact on what we want to focus on our students graduating with. It is going to be a laborious thing, but yeah, I do agree, we, we don't want to have such an array of, it, it would be kind of nice to have them where they're kind of categorized a little bit just for when we're interpreting, interpreting it, but, but I mean, we're, we're gathering the data from our community. And, and I guess it would be to kind of apply to what our ends policy is, I mean, what we're trying to achieve, you know, so. And what better way to do that? But it is, it is a monumental task, and we have to figure out some kind of a systematic way of doing it where it's possible, I guess.
And you could have general questions, but you could also have specific ones, like, how important do you feel computer training is for the students who are going through primaries? You know, very important. You know, you can have those questions intermingled as well, which I think could be really useful for the board in terms of going, okay, look, we've got 80% of the respondents said that this computer thing is really important to them. So that empowers us to be able to, you know, tip more of the economy in that direction, so to speak, or whatever way else we, you know. So I, I, that's where this thing feels like a very big or potentially useful for us, but I don't know how to jam all of those answers, you know, or questions into this single sheet of paper. Am I hearing board member or the news?
Yeah.
I'm going to mute you, Arlene, okay?
Would you, would you ever do specific questions like a, you know, maybe it's more than just three or four questions, where you have a bunch of questions, like Mike just said, like about, you know, computer skills and mathematics and science, and, and have it based on a scale system? So that then you kind of tally all the numbers and then it kind of gives you a sense of a scale of importance of the array of different categories. I mean, it, it makes it a lot more complex questionnaire form, but maybe in quantifying the data, it makes it more streamlined. I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know.
Looks like Julie is trying to connect to the meeting. I kind of, I don't know if, it's taking a while. I would like to hear our input too.
Who, who was that? I'm sorry?
Julie, it looks like Julie is trying to come into the meeting. She was delayed, she wasn't sure if she would make it, and I see her up on the screen, trying, connecting, but it's, it's taken a while, so I'm not sure. Able to.
Well, is, is there an action item connected with this? Was Julie hoping for us to be able to get this sort of resolved during this meeting?
I think that's what that Randy said that she was.
I think, I think so. So, you know, I, I think you've given a lot of good information recommendations. And, you know, I think you can continue the conversation, and Corey, maybe you and I can give our notes and feedback to Julie and, and I think she just left. Oh, there she is. And then we can, you know, reshare it with you for, you know, just the final approval and then, and then hope to move forward in January.
That sounds good. Hi, Julie. I'm muted, I think, yeah. I don't know if I, I can't unmute you.
Hello.
Hi. So we were just discussing the, the survey.
Okay.
And had gotten to the point that Randy and I would put the notes from the And had gotten to the point that Randy and I would put the notes from the discussion together to give back to you and, um, work it again and send it out to the board so that we can move on it in January.
Yeah, we, my concern, I think that I pointed out before was I think we'll have to have it into the town offices if we want it in the, um, I think we have to have it done before our next meeting, if we want it printed in the town reports.
Okay, when, um,
But you won't even have the budget until your next meeting. So that won't even be ready for the town report until you vote on it.
I think that that deadline is later in January, if I remember correctly.
For the school one, yeah, I think, but we wanted to include it in Polit and Rupert's Town Report. They may have.
Got it.
But, um, I know I gave myself the beginning of January deadline, but I may have given myself a deadline that's like a little earlier, just so I could make sure to fix anything. When is our January meeting?
The 4th.
No, that's the VRSU Board.
Sorry.
The 11th?
It's going to, probably the 11th.
And I think I did, yeah. Get back to you, to when the towns would need those things submitted.
Yeah, it is the 11th. Yours is the last one. Um, but, but Julie, if you, the thought had been that taking the feedback from people today, reworking the survey, sending it out to people for final approval and trying, you know, we could certainly move that date up. Uh, you know, January 6th or 7th or something like that.
Okay. Yeah, I wish I remembered what the exact date was. We probably have time, I just can't remember off the top of my head right now. And then Michael had sent something.
I'm, I'm just trying to go back into my email, I'm not at my shop.
Last week of January, okay, preferably earlier. I think we're fine. Oh, I get myself all worked up. Okay, so that, that will work.
Great. Oh.
Sorry, I missed this.
Oh no, that's, that's, I'm glad that you're here with us. I can give the meeting back to you as the chair?
Oh, okay. I don't have, I don't know what I did with my pile. Can you just?
Sure. Second, I'm flipping back and forth too. All right, so that was our community engagement. We have board updates. Don't have any, do you have board updates? Next meeting, January 11th at 6:30 Zoom, and then board self-evaluation. What is the level of engagement of all board members? I think it was pretty high today. Yeah. We had a full board today. Is the agenda followed? Yes. Was it linked to the board's annual work plan? I believe so, but I didn't. And was there sufficient time spent on community engagement? What did everybody think? Yes?
Yes, I think we spent a lot of time on it, talking about the questionnaire that we want to send out, so.
Yeah. It feels good to, to keep honing that. Ends discussion, I guess if that is part of this um, survey, then yes. But otherwise I don't think that we did. Have limitations. I don't think we directly talked about that, that I can recall now. And, and so we are supposed to talk about that at every meeting? That's, is that part of?
You haven't and, and I don't have, to be honest, we don't do it at any meeting yet. But it comes.
So it's just like a place filler, kind of?
Well, i- i- if you end up really moving to policy governance, it will take on a, on a different role.
Okay. Consent agenda was used appropriately, I believe it was. What, what, I'm looking for input on this one, everybody. I don't want to steamroll through it.
Well, I, everybody listens well and is respectful. I, I appreciate that.
I really, I, this board has, is, um, very good, high functioning, I think.
Yeah, I think everyone contributed and everyone listened and, yeah. As always, it's really nice.
Do we have any concerns or improvements for our meeting? I don't. Okay, I guess that is.
Well, I, I just want to bring up one thing. I, I, I just wanted to, um, wonder, Arlene, how did you finally get to us and how can we make that a more, uh, comfortable you know, uh, arrival here? What, can you just update us very briefly on what's happened with, um, with, uh, Hub 66 your way and tonight, what was difficult about getting to the board meeting? Are you there, Arlene?
Arlene is muted. Unmute because, um,
Unmute. The first time I was camping up on the Canadian border and then for about a month I was laid up with sciatica. And I tell you.
I, I just meant about tonight, trying to get to the meeting tonight.
Tonight? Uh, I went up and I got my iPad because my computer is, does not seem to pick up with our new high speed on Zoom.
Okay.
And my little iPad is doing a great job. So I will use that, I'll get a new iPad probably.
I see, okay.
Well, then that sounds like we will have you here with us in January.
Absolutely. Provided we don't have a blizzard or something and every, all the electricity goes down.
No. All right. Do we have any public comments, Celeste?
Yes, we have one. Um, Jenny Russo says, thank you to all the administration, teachers and staff for all of your hard work and dedication. Mandy has been amazing. And that was it.
Bravo.
Great. Okay, I guess I will take a motion to adjourn.
You're muted. I think Julie wants to say something.
Oh, okay.
Hi, sorry.
Oh.
Only other thing that I was thinking of earlier today was I just wanted to make sure that the, um, policy governance style model policies were sent to, I guess probably just Corey and Arlene don't have them? For the next time we do, uh, policy governance practice session?
Can't remember if I got them. I, I just went, I looked at, um, the TNG ones because I figured that they were taken from the TNG at the last meeting. So.
Okay, well, if you're comfortable with what you have, I just wanted to make sure that.
I'll double check. I can't remember if there was another.
I just wrote a note down too, so we can make sure that I've sent this out.
Right, because I did it during the meeting is when I, um, went to the TNG. Just to compare, I don't.
Will I be able to re-watch this like on YouTube or is it only online? Like I can watch it later, right?
Yes, you can.
Perfect.
It's recording, yeah.
Celeste, maybe you can just send that directly to Julie also, okay?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
This is season two, I think, episode seven or something like that.
And watch all of them for fun.
Don't get binging now, Julie.
Gosh. Julie, do you want to close the meeting or? We, are we done?
I think, I, I've missed all of it, so I feel like you could just keep on, keep on truckin', Corey.
Okay. All right. Do we have any motions to adjourn?
Yes. I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, Scott.
I'll second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Uh, sorry, who's, who seconded that?
All right. In favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, I guess the meeting is adjourned.